I was waiting on Jeff to have time to think about it.
Yes, I believe with the changes that you've made and you've been able to deliberate upon those here publicly, I believe that you could move forward with those recommended in your motion.
So the motion would be basically what would be acceptable to the council and not what the option is in front of us?
Correct.
Right.
And all that still gives us the two bedrooms downstairs.
You still get the two bedrooms downstairs, she's still have seven and a half foot side setbacks, yes.
Chairman, I'm going to refrain from discussion and has to be abstaining.
Okay, please indicate Mark is abstaining from discussion and/or a vote. Any other questions for either Bailey or Kevin? Do I have a motion?
I move to approve with the publicly discussed amendments maintaining the seven and a half foot setback.
Side setback?
Yeah, I mean side setback, maintaining the front setbacks with the adjustment of moving the house 25 feet.
And the garage at 35.
And the garage 35, if that's correct.
Okay, so, and the two bedrooms we made?
And the two bedrooms remaining downstairs.
Okay, so if I'm to understand your motion, you want, you've made a motion to approve, yeah, with a minimum square footage of 1,450 square feet, a...
Fourteen, the fourteen fifty.
Fourteen fifty.
Yeah, fourteen fifty, minimum square footage with a 25-foot front setback
For the structure.
With a 35-foot setback for the garage.
Correct.
Okay.
And maintaining the seven and a half setbacks on the side.
Yep.
And the original setback in the rear.
Along with other staff comments to remain, okay.
So before we go further, you mentioned two and a half feet on the backside. Are you sure 1,450 is the number that meets the criteria?
Yes, because we are at, let's got it on here. Yes.
Good, okay. So we have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, further discussion. All those in favor of approving this PRD amendment, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Amendment is approved. Thank you guys, that was a discussion there. Next on the agenda is Talia Trace. That has been withdrawn, okay. It looks like we're on to preliminary plats, the first agenda item under preliminary plats is Portico Place 400 to 468 Blair Road. Owner/developer Blair Road LLC, Adam Green.
Yes, this is the preliminary plat for the Portico Place development that was just rezoned last month. It's 33 lots, 5.77 acres. We had several comments, several of which were standard type comments, really, so we want to keep really one through five. Those are all standard comments. Again, the major thoroughfare plan, just to reiterate what we talked about, what was rezoned, does designate Blair Road as a collector, an adequate right-of-way is to be dedicated with the plat, and so it is shown with this plat. Number six will need to remain, it was just, the water line will need to be extended to Portico Place and Blair Road. The tennis water main down Portico Place doesn't exist yet, so it can be built, and so that's just against kind of informational, but still needs to remain. We did ask them to confirm the fire flow on Blair Road, that still needs to be done, and that, and that there are some road improvements that are proposed to Blair Road from a different development, but it is proposed, and so that'll have to, the water line will need to be installed before those improvements are done, so, so that will need to remain. Comments 10 through 14, which are regarding the utility plans, the construction entrance, adding a water valve, and putting the water line encasing and then the review fee have all been addressed and can be removed. So with those remaining nine comments, staff would recommend approval.
So we're remaining?
Comments one through nine.
Okay. No, I'm sorry, did you say staff is recommending approval?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Questions for Kevin? Kevin, all this seems to be in line with what we've previously seen here, correct?
It is.
Okay. So we had no changes or anything of substance that would need us to consider anything else at this time?
Correct, it's consistent with the approved PRD.
Okay. Any questions or discussion? I have a motion to approve with staff comments from Tony, do I have a second? Second from Tim. Motion and a second to approve with staff comments, further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Our next agenda item under preliminary plats is the vintage section one along Genie Lane and Old Nashville Highway. Owner/developer TDK Construction Company.
Yeah, this is the first plat, the first section of the overall vintage development, which was approved a few months ago. Again, this is section one, this does extend Needham Drive as well as our new road from Old Nashville Highway. This will be called White Birch Way. Those will be public streets, and then you'll have the, it will create that first lot and the first development, our first phase of the overall development. We had several comments, most of which were the basic comments there regarding development agreement and MPDS permit and everything. So we want to keep comments one through five. Again, the major thoroughfare plan does designate Old Nashville Highway as a minor material, and Needham as a collector, an adequate right-of-way is shown for both of those streets. We did have comments six, seven, and eight, which were to submit a full set of utility plans. We have those. The traffic study for this development did show a dedicated left turn lane off Old Nashville Highway into White Birch Avenue. That is shown now, so that has been addressed, and then the road name has been approved by 911. So those comments six, seven, and eight can be removed. So we would recommend approval with comments one through five.
Kevin, does White Birch line up with these loads?
I don't believe so.
It looked like there was another road on the other side, I just couldn't tell what it was.
The apartment complex, yes, that's what it was. I knew, I did line up with something.
So it's further down?
Yeah, it's a little further down, it's by the apartments behind those.
Other questions for Kevin? Not hearing any other questions or discussion, are we, are we ready for a motion? If so, do I have one?
I make a motion to accept with staff comments.
I have a motion to approve with staff comments from Amy, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Final plats. We are on to agenda item one under final plat, Cedar Hills, section four, Rocky Fork Road, Morton Lane. Owner/developer Cedar Hills Holding LLC.
Yes, this is the final phase of Cedar Hills. This is 97 lots, it's part of Cedar Hills PRD. We had a few comments, which will, some of which, or most of which will need to remain. One is this phase is required, the earlier phases of Cedar Hills were approved prior to the, our enforcement of the requirement regarding 1,000 gallons per minute, this phase will be required to meet that requirement, so this is comment number one we would need to keep. Comment number two is a standard comment regarding adding the signatures prior to recording, we'll need to keep that. Again, no aspect of the major thoroughfare plan is affected by this development. We did ask them to show the fire hydrants, and that has been addressed, we can remove comment number four. The comment number five was from the utilities department regarding the sewer line, and the LS there is lift station, the Morton Lane lift station, it is going to be required to be upsized, and so they still need, we would need to keep that comment. And then comments six and seven from CUD, again, this is one, the fire flow isn't adequate at this time, so they cannot get any building permits until that's been updated and repaired, so we'll need to keep, basically need to keep all the comments except number four, and with those comments, staff would recommend approval.
Questions for comments, or Kevin, are any comments?
No, not specifically, but do we have any timeline on that CUD work out there?
That's, you know, there was, there was one upgrade that was, I think, completed in the spring, but this is something different. And this is, there's several developments out there that are affected by it. They are, they were trying to find some property to where it would, where they could put a pump station and correct the issue, and I think they're having trouble finding someone who will sell them a piece of property to put the pump station on, so. There was one developer that was looking at possibly doing that, but I think they ended up not following through with that property or whatever, they were looking at purchasing, and so, you know, this is still kind of, still a holdup. It's only about 700 gallons a minute, and we need 1,000, so. But I really don't have a timeline to answer your question directly, no.
If they need a pump station, yeah.
Yeah.
But they offered a will serve at the time, correct? I mean, it's just going to take them time to...
Yeah, I mean, they're saying that they're, they can serve domestically as Kansas served for fire purposes.
This, if, this particular one, does it come off of Morton, up on the Morton Lane side, or does it come off the Ammerville side, or do we know?
It's more of that Rocky Fork, Ammerville, along Rocky Fork, Ammerville Road. It does affect Stewart's Creek villages, which we just looked at, it affects this one, it affects, I think, future phases of Blakeney, Derby Run, there's five or six out there that have been approved, they're affected by it. So, but to answer your question directly, I don't have a timeline from then on.
No, I asked because I was curious, I didn't know if you know or not.
Other questions?
I move to approve with staff comments.
Okay, I have a motion to approve with staff comments, do I have a second? Andrew? Yep. I have a motion and a second to approve with staff comments, further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. The next agenda item, I'm going to turn it over to our vice chair here, Mark. I've got a bit of a conflict, so I'm going to step out of this one, so please indicate, I won't be voting or taking part in the discussion.
All right, this is Lee Bowman, lot six, common area phase two, Potomac Place, future Genie Lane extension. The owner/developer is John Lee LLC.
Yes, and we apologize, there's actually not a hard copy of this one on your desk.
Yeah, there is.
Is folks looking, if there is, I think?
Oh, no, there's not.
We had, we had digital copies, and so we have one on the screen there. The builder, or the developer rather, or the engineer did not provide us any hard copies, so we apologize for that, but it was submitted, so we had to put it on the agenda, so, per state law, so. So anyway, this is a, it's an existing lot, lot six of the Lee Bowman subdivision, and so this is just dividing it up into two lots and then creating also a common area. It's where the regional detention pond and everything is located. It's about 1.3 acres of property total, Z2 zoning. We would need to keep comment number one regarding adding signatures of the owners. They had, they're showing the common area actually extending into the future right-of-way of Genie Lane, which are, we're in the process of actually, we'll be donating to us, and so we just ask them to show that that, the common area that's where the detention pond is, that they remove that line to the back part of the right-of-way. They did show the previous lot lines, we can remove number three. They have answered the questions in an email to me regarding comments four and five, we need to show them on the plat. The common area will be owned, almost all this property is going to maintain ownership with, by John Lee LLC. They will own the common area as well, that just needs to be shown on the plat. And then there's some, there's a couple of small areas on the, where Genie Lane is going to come through on the north side, kind of just small little triangular pieces of property, and they were, they were planning on dedicating that as right-of-way as well, so we just asked them to show that on the plat as well. So, with those four, comments four and five somewhat amended, we would want to keep those, and they still do need to submit the review fee. So, we can remove comment three, but the others we would need to keep. And with those comments, we would recommend approval.
Okay, so staff recommends approval on this, is there any questions from anybody on the commission? I think I already know the answer to this, it's pretty easy to tell, but by splitting that lot six into six A and six B, it looks like there's still plenty of ample room to be 20,000 square feet or bigger, I'd say, right?
Yes, yes.
So to meet the C2 zone.
Yes.
Comments or questions? If none, we'll take a motion from somebody.
Move to approve staff comments.
I have a motion, need a second?
Second.
Second. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Kevin, what? Our next item is Smyrna Airport Business Park, lot four, northeast corner of Aviation Parkway and Three Industrial Drive. Owner/developer USICV Airport Business Park, number four, Inc.
This is the next, next lot, next phase of Smyrna Airport Business Park, this is lot four. This is for only one lot, it's about over 26 acres in the A1 airport zone. This is a, to create the easements in the lot, this will, primarily to dedicate the easements for utilities and access and those kinds of things. We did have a few comments, one we'll need to keep regarding the adding the signatures of the owner and land surveyor prior to recording, and again, no aspect of the thoroughfare plan is affected by this development. Comments, comment three has been addressed, they've added all the dimensions on the Three Industrial Road access, ingress egress easement. They've also added the dimensions we needed for the utility and drainage easement along Liberator Lane. We did ask them to label the right-of-way and road width, and so that's been done. And then they did clarify regarding the access easement along Three and Aviation, so comments three through six can all be removed. So we would recommend approval with, just really comment one is all that would be left.
Okay. Questions for Kevin or comments?
The airports continuing to grow.
Do I have a motion?
Move to approve staff comments.
I have a motion to approve with staff comments, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion is second to approve with staff comments. All those in favor, segment five, I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Our next item under final plats, and final item is Walnut Ridge, section one, Q Garden Lane. Owner/developer John Mitchell Burns.
Yeah, this is the final plat for section one of Walnut Ridge. This is, the preliminary plat was approved several months ago, and so this is just the final plat. This is five, I'm sorry, 12 lots on 5.44 acres in the R3 zone. There were, this is lot 12, as shown on this plat, is the area that has been requested for annexation. The, we had just a few comments, again, adding the owner's signature, which we would need to keep. Again, the same comment as we did with the annexation regarding the thoroughfare plan, and then the road eventually to the west there, connecting Rock Springs and Lee Road. We, our building official did ask for them to show the pad elevations on all the lots, they've got them on several lots, so he did request that, and so we would want to keep that comment. Comment four is really an informational comment, we want to keep it regarding building envelope on lot 11, because it's got some oddly shaped easements there, we want to get that staked before they go out to do that footing inspection. And then again, the, regarding the annexation, the plat approval was subject, would be subject to that approval of the annexation R3 request, since this does affect lot 12, so we would recommend approval with those comments.
And I'm sorry, we're keeping comments three, four, and five?
Yes, as well as one.
As well as one?
Yeah.
And of course, this preliminary, or the final is consistent with preliminary?
Yes.
With the addition of lot 12?
Just that one lot, yes.
Okay.
No new roadways or utilities or anything, just that one lot.
Okay. Questions for Kevin or staff?
That's above ground easement on 11, isn't it? That's not a pipe or anything?
Actually, I think it's, it's a drainage easement.
I mean, is it underground, it's above ground, right?
Uh, I'm sorry, I can't recall if it's a pipe or a ditch, I don't know, I don't recall.
Just wonder with that building envelope, that gets a little challenging right there.
Right, that's why we wanted to stake those corners, so when that foundation gets, you know, formed up, that we, we check that before we do that, do that inspection.
Other questions or comments?
Move to approve with staff comments.
I have a motion to approve with staff comments, do I have a second? Second from Amy. I have a motion and a second to approve with staff comments, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. On to site plans, our first site plan is Ammerville Station 2201, 2205, and 2209 Ammerville Road. Owner/developer Marky Dai and the Patel Group Development LLC.
This is a proposed gas station convenience store and restaurant space building that is located in southwestern quadrant at the intersection of Allenville Road and One Mile Lane. In its current state, the property is vacant, and the surrounding zoning consists of RM in Rutherford County and C2 in the town across from Allenville Road. The development would have a proposed access off of Allenville, which is subject to TDOT approval, and then there would also be one access to One Mile Lane as far south on this property as you can get. They're proposing for ingress and egress out of the property. The proposed drive-through does have stacking, which would accommodate approximately 11 vehicles. Square footage landscaping provided, 4,817 square feet, and they're proposing for 7,364 square feet, so they're exceeding their requirement. Total parking required of 65 spaces, and they're proposing for 67, and then there are three handicap spaces that are required as part of that, and they're showing all three. Landscape plan does show a type C landscape buffer along the south and western property lines, which do abut RM-zoned properties in Rutherford County. Variety of trees and shrubs are shown along Allenville Road and One Mile Lane. Trees are also shown to be planted in landscape islands around the parking lot area. The architectural elevations show buildings to be built primarily of brick and stone. Stone is shown in a band along the base of the building on all four sides, with brick covering the rest of the building on the south and east elevations. Stucco is shown as an accent of 23.3% and 9% on the north and west elevations. The north elevation, which fronts Allenville Road, carries a stone band around the base of the building with primarily brick and glass front and stucco accent. This proposed location is located within the 100-year flood plain. The minimum finished floor elevation must be at least one foot above the base flood elevation. Appkin is showing the building to be flood-proofed two foot above the finished floor elevation, which is one foot below the base flood elevation. They are proposing to use waterproof stone veneer, as well as flood barriers that would be installed at all openings in the event a flood event occurs. Based on the zoning ordinance requirements, a certified engineer or architect will need to verify the design and methods in accordance with accepted standards. In addition, staff still wants to review the drainage calculations to ensure how the site will drain with the additional impervious pavement on the site. We have a couple of staff comments, all to remain, staff comment six, or standard comment rather, six, just go over that. Allenville Road is a TDOT roadway, so that access onto Allenville is subject to TDOT approval. And staff comment one, sewer is not available at the site until the extension is constructed by the Rutherford County Baptist Church. That is a site plan went over a couple of months ago. The appkin has noted that a forced main, they're proposing to use a forced main to serve this site, which would tie into existing manhole that is currently behind the O'Reilly's and the Bread Store on that property across from Allenville Road. In addition, they are proposing to go across Allenville Road, so TDOT will also be required to be contacted about that. Two waters, CUD, so this comment goes along with the rest of CUD's comments. CUD did provide us with a will serve letter that said they, this supply should meet domestic water, irrigation, and fire demands at this time. Comment three goes along with the flood plain comment. Proposed building is located within the 100-year flood plain. Per the zoning ordinance, section 7.080B2, being the finished floor elevation is not elevated one foot above the 100-year flood plain. All areas of the building below the required elevation shall be watertight, with walls substantially permeable to the passage of water, and are built with structural components having the capability of resisting hydrostatic and hydrodynamic loads and the effects of buoyancy. Registered engineer or architect shall certify that the design and methods of construction are in accordance with accepted standards. All that being said, based on what the plan's provided, staff doesn't believe what they have provided meets those standards, so we would like a certified engineer to prove that what they have submitted does meet the standards for watertight of a building. Comment four is utilities comment, we ask to provide the rim elevations of all manholes. Comment six, the sewer backwater valve will be required upstream of the pump. Comment six, provide drainage calculations, once again, those drainage calculations were provided, we're still waiting, Public Works to review the calculations. Comment seven, the building is required to be sprinkled based on the existing infrastructure. It's more so a standard comment than a staff comment, but just want it to be known. Comment eight, we ask them to shift trees away from any pipes, there's a pipe in one of the lower left corner of the property next to the dumpster that is pretty much planted on top of the pipes, we want that relocated elsewhere. And comment nine plays off of comment two again, about the existing infrastructure being adequate to meet the fire flow requirement of the 1,500 gallons per minute for this development. And comments 10 through 21 are all made by CUD, so those comments will need to be addressed by CUD. As staff recommendation, staff does have some concerns with the flood plain portions of this property, being most of it is within that 100-year flood plain. If these issues are able to be resolved, staff would recommend approval. Then applicant will still be required to apply for a grading permit in which those drainage calculations will be reviewed at that time to verify all those requirements are being met. That's all I got.
Mitchell, first question for you I have is the entrance off of Ammerville Road. So that would require TDOT approval for that cut, correct?
Correct.
Okay. When TDOT looks at that approval, do they dictate whether or not a left in is allowed? Or would they, could they potentially dictate it's a right in, right out, or do we have an idea?
That's something I would like to default to Charles, well.
Charles, yeah.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, yeah, TDOT will look at that, there is currently a left turn lane there, it is a three-lane section. Yes, Mr. Chairman, yeah, TDOT will look at that. There is currently a left turn lane there. It is a three-lane section. But they will decide if, they will allow that left turn lane in there to be a dedicated left into the site or a right in, right out. But I don't see a problem with it, with the situation they have making it a dedicated left turn lane into the site.
Charles, what about the left out?
Yeah, they have a dedicated left coming out of the, out of the site, onto the road. Yeah, I don't see a problem.
How far is that and your estimate from the intersection of One Mile?
It's 215 feet, I believe, something like that, or 255. I think it's 255 on that one and 215 on the One Mile Lane side.
And do we know anymore about the signalization of One Mile?
This one, the, they said it doesn't, the traffic studies showed that it didn't warrant it. There will be some extended delays during peak hour from the left turn lane from One Mile onto Ammerville Road, but it didn't warrant a signal. This is going to be an area where one development may not be the trigger, but just a cumulative of all the growth in the area may be, will be the trigger for that signalization.
Including the church across the street.
Right, sir.
Including the church we just approved across the street.
Yes, because they're on kind of a Sunday, Wednesday night. So, once that road's there, once that other tract maybe developed out, that tract eight, you know, on the other side of the, with the church, some of those may, you know, be the trigger.
I was sort of thinking the goal was to signalize One Mile and Ammerville.
Yeah, it's been talked about. It just hasn't reached rid of the warrant level yet. But with all the growth even down off Ammerville, you know, Rocky Fork, you know, the developments out there and that traffic coming back through, just the background traffic will be one of the major triggers for the warrants.
And that's not our call, that's TDOT's call?
Yes, sir.
Correct, yeah.
Charles, even though a good bit of it is TDOT's call, I'd like to know your opinion as far as the ingress and egress out on Ammerville Road into this, as far as what's being proposed. Is this something that you can support, or do you, what are your thoughts on this?
Having the, both the left and right turn lane.
I'm sorry, say that again.
Having both the left and right turn lane coming out of the site on both the entrances and exits there.
Okay.
And the site distance, they have moved them as far as they can back, and you're looking at over 200 feet away from the intersection on both the driveways.
So you're comfortable there?
I'm comfortable with that, yes, sir.
Okay.
And as we're growing out that leg of Ammerville and 102 now, can you just update the planning commission on what you know or what you've heard about the diverging diamond concept there at the Ammerville interchange?
Uh, the last was, I didn't, um, the timeline was about two more years. I think they've gone through the conceptual study, and they're in, the environmental study's been completed. So the last I've gotten from TDOT is there about two years out from construction, going to construction.
All right. Any other questions for Charles? Thank you, Charles.
Okay.
Other questions? I want to make sure I'm understanding about the floodplain. So are we in an either, either or situation in that, as far as the finished floor elevation, is it that they, can they, if they build up one foot above the base elevation, would that still require the floodproofing? Or can they not build above that and do things as far as the waterproofing goes?
Yes, the, they are required to be, the finished floor can be, it's an either or. They can be elevated to one foot above, the finished floor one foot above, or they can do the waterproofing. They have chosen to go with the waterproofing, there's, with the limited area to build up that area, and, and they will also have to then cut to balance that. It would be pretty difficult to build a commercial building and meeting ADA requirements and all that, because you're, you're going to have, to elevate the building, you're going to have to also elevate parking lots and everything else. And so they have chosen to go the route of floodproofing, which is available, an option for them under the zoning ordinance and FEMA's requirements.
Okay.
But we just want to be sure that what they're proposing, we want to have that, the specific, that engineering design, the engineering stamp on it. They've given us some, some materials and things that they're looking at doing, but we wanted to be sure that that design meets the criteria that FEMA's looking for. And so, so we still need that additional information from them.
So that's why that comment you're recommending remains?
Yes.
As far as that goes?
Correct, correct.
It's a little less intrusive to do it that way, I would think, with the cut and fill.
It'd be the only way they could really develop the property. Because other, unless they bought additional property and cut somewhere else nearby, yeah.
And for public knowledge, they cannot dump water anywhere else, so.
Correct, they have to keep, yeah.
Maintain it or disperse it.
Right.
Other questions for staff on this?
Kevin, what's your feel on this with all the, the needs that are on this list? Are you comfortable with it doing it if, if they can supply these and fulfill these?
Well, if they can be, yeah, that was our main concern. We had left was the flood issue. So I think, we, I think we've covered that as far as our concern. The latest will serve letter we got from CUD, I think a lot of their comments are going to go away, because they have looked at it and, and then they can, they think, they say they can supply it. So I think we're okay there, so.
Help me understand item nine, staff comments, item nine again, just the 1750 GPM, and, and the buildings will be sprinkled as well, correct?
Right, and I think that 1750 was based on, I think we've got additional information. CUD did never, they give us comments, but then they never remove it. So those are holdovers from previous submittals. 1,500 is what the tax would be required with the sprinkled building, so.
That's why I was asking that question.
Right, and they, and they can't provide 1,500.
Yeah.
That's what they've said, anyway.
Does that need to be clarified, or is that?
I don't think so. I mean, I think.
I've got a copy of the will serve letter, the new one.
Yeah, we, yeah. Yeah, we've received, yeah, we did, they did, CUD did send us that too, Ed, so we do have that. So, yeah, I mean, I think, again, really to me, comments nine, nine through 21, based on their revised will serve letter, I think all those can go away.
And take care of themselves.
I think, I think we probably, it probably would make sense to not include those in, in a motion, in reality.
To remove nine through 21?
Yes, because I think the, their revised will serve letter addresses that. And so I think.
Okay.
They've, they've, with our comment two and everything we also had as well, I think we could remove nine through 21. We, we know the construction type now. I think we've got that worked out through the coast department. And with the 1,500 gallons per minute requirement, based on the type of construction it is, they can meet that requirement. So I'm okay removing the comments nine through 21.
Okay. If you can give us your name and address, and I'll let you speak.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, I'm Steve Steele with Huddleston Steel Engineering. Our offices are at 2115 Northwest Broad, just up the street. Mr. Atkins, maybe to give you a little more comfort level, a lot of those CUD comments have to do with dealing with CUD all the way through the completion of construction. I, I agree, they probably shouldn't have been on there, but they were. But the will serve letter says that they have adequate water to service facility. The main reason I got up was to tell you something about the floodproofing. I know y'all were a little concerned about that. We went this way because initially we had our building a foot above the 100-year floodplain. But the field that's required to make the parking lot and the sidewalks accessible for everybody, there's really no way to do that and balance the site with cut and fill. So the other, only other option is the floodproofing of the building. But the real key, the key I haven't heard tonight, is FEMA has published a preliminary map which shows the flood zone in this area dropping, I think it's three and a half or four feet. So that won't occur till about maybe the first of the year. Nobody knows when it'll be final.
Is this, is this the redone FEMA maps?
These are the, yeah, the revised maps do show it, but we have to, I, I contacted our folks with FEMA and the state, and we have to enforce. Yeah, we do have to enforce the current map. We can't go with.
And that's why I was asking, go ahead, I'm sorry.
But we fully anticipate that even doing the floodproofing, putting the floor at 5515, that floor will be two and a half feet above that flood elevation if their maps continue through the process of going right now. So that's why we're comfortable. We feel like that floodproofing is, was, will be temporary.
So tell me just a little bit about the floodproofing process. I'm learning something here.
Well, yeah, Mark, I'm not that versed at it, but Mr. Ed Stevens, who's here, who's a licensed, licensed engineer also, can explain that a little bit.
There may be other people interested to know what that, that is.
Ed, if you could give us your name and address, please.
Ed Stevens with Stevens Design out of Brentwood, Tennessee. Basically, the floodproof, we've done a couple of projects in Metro there off of Charlotte Pike. And basically, what you're trying to do is you come up with a contingency plan to where the, the owners and the employees understand what you do in the case of rising water. But the building would be the, to, well, we're actually going four inches above, but go like two foot eight from finished floor, and you'd waterproof the exterior walls. Basically, we'd have a block wall waterproof it, and then our, our veneer, and then waterproof that. And then at the doorways, they make these, they're called DAM-EASY, to give you an idea, but it's a product that can be stored at the site easily. Employee can install them without any tools. You set it in the opening in the door jamb, and the, you crank out the sides, and then it has an air pump that pumps a bladder that seals the water. And by doing this, it, it solves the floodproofing process, and it is approved by FEMA.
I'd never heard of it, that's why I wanted to know. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Other questions?
Kevin, if hypothetically the FEMA maps are revised, as we just heard, and they decided to wait to start this product, could they come back in and request a revision based on the new flood map?
Surely.
I mean, if we're approving or not.
They, certainly they could do that. I think they're, they're wanting to get started. They don't want to wait, because it, it may be a year or more before those maps are effective.
Okay.
Sorry.
Anything else from the commission? Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve with staff comments one through eight.
I have a motion to approve with staff comments one through eight. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve. Further discussion? All those in favor of approval signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Our next agenda item under site plans is Fast Pace Clinic, 880 Isabel Lane. Owner developer Paul Tashi, Fast Pace Health, Health Urgent Care.
Fast Pace, Fast Pace Urgent Care Clinic is proposing a 3,700 square foot healthcare facility, which would be located on the intersection of Isabel Lane and Rock Springs Road. There's an existing cell tower on the same property as this proposed building. As proposed, there would be one access point, which would be onto Isabel Lane. There will have to be a final plat submitted to subdivide the property and record prior to issuance of the permit. Square footage of vehicular use area, 23,820 square feet, which would require 2,382 square feet of landscaping. Appkin is proposing for 2,666 square feet. Total parking required of 20 spaces, and they're showing for 50. And that requires two handicap spaces, and they're showing those two. Landscape plan does show a Type C landscape buffer on the western property line adjoining a church. Trees are also shown within landscape islands throughout the parking lot, and trees and shrubs are also shown lining Rock Springs Road and Isabel Lane. Architecture elevations show the building to be built entirely using brick of two different colors. We have a couple of standard comments, all to remain, as well as a couple of staff comments. Staff comment one, the plat aforementioned has been submitted recently, and so we take out that first sentence about submitting the plat, but it will need to be recorded prior to additions of any building permits. Comment two, to provide details on the retaining wall they have proposed for the site. Comment three, four, five have all, have all been addressed and can be removed. Comment six, we asked them to submit stormwater calculations. And comment seven, to submit utility plans. Comment eight was about the address, and that has been addressed. Comment nine, we asked them to show sewer service every 75 feet as need to have a sewer cleanout area. So comments three, four, five, and eight have all been addressed. The rest will remain, and staff would recommend approval with those comments.
Hey Mitch, looking at the site plan, there appears that the cell tower may be sectioned off in, as far as a, another lot, or is that?
It's currently one parcel that is showing with that subdivision.
So we will be subdividing this parcel?
That has been submitted. It just needs to be recorded.
Okay.
Kevin, if you show the abstaining and not discussing, please.
Good with design review as far as the building goes?
All brick.
All brick, that's awesome. Do we have any other questions for staff? Do I have a motion?
Move for approval with staff comments.
I have a motion to approve with staff comments. Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second to approve with staff comments. Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries. Our next item under site plans is Grace Development Aviation Parkway. Owner developer Grace Development.
Grace Development is proposing a warehouse facility on the northeastern quadrant of North Lower Street and Aviation Parkway. Currently, the proposed, the property is currently vacant at this time and surrounded by other industrial activities. The proposed warehouse would be 127,650 square feet in size, which would front Aviation Parkway. Property is currently in the process of being rezoned from an I-3 to an I-1, which would allow for less restrictive setbacks. Currently, this site plan submitted does show utilizing the I-1 front setbacks, so the property will need to finish this rezoning process in order to be applicable with the proposed, with the proposed site plan. Vehicular use area at the site, 82,255 square feet, and they're proposing for 6,580, they're required to do rather, eight, 6,580 square feet of landscaping, proposing for double that at 12,400 square feet. Required parking of 54 spaces, and they're proposing for 90. And that also requires four handicap spaces, and they're showing all four. Landscape plan shows a variety of trees and shrubs lining North Lower Street and Aviation Parkway. Additional trees and shrubs are also shown in the parking area within the site. Architecture elevations show the entire building built with concrete tilt panels with two bands of dark gray color, which would contrast with light gray on the rest of the building. Couple standard comments, all to remain, as well as, we have a couple of staff comments as well to go over. We asked them to submit the landscape calculations based on vehicular use area that has been addressed. Comment two, to show how many square feet of landscape is provided, they have done that. Comment three, we asked them to show the dumpster enclosure elevations. Staff for this one would be comfortable allowing a relaxation in that requirement to being that these dumpsters will be located behind the building out of sight. So staff would feel comfortable with the removal of that comment. Comment four, we asked them to show the grinder pump belonging to the owner, not the town. Comment five, must provide a reduced pressure backfill preventer. Comment six, please provide pavement markings on the south foot in ingress and egress points, and that has been addressed. Comment six, we asked them that based on the provided parking spaces, four handicap spaces are required, and they have shown those four spaces. So staff comments one, two, three, five, and six have all, five, sorry, one, two, three, six, and seven have all been addressed. Comments four and five will stay on there. With that, staff would recommend approval with those remaining comments.
So they have now actually have proposed the required four spaces and proposed.
Correct.
They've got it for.
Correct.
It looks like as far as loading and unloading, it's on the opposite side of aviation there. So it moves it to the back of the building, in essence.
Which is what the I-1 zoning allows for.
That's what I thought, so we've moved it so that we can do that and then have the loading and unloading on the rear of the building. and unloading on the rear of the building.
Correct.
And I think we've looked at that in a couple of other situations, and have considered and approved that, just for that purpose.
That entire quadrant over there is a lot of that, isn't it? It's where housing and concrete and stuff.
Questions for Mitchell or staff?
Uh, notice there's a landscaping, it's discussed in here. Are we comfortable as staff with the buffering that's facing Lowery and so forth, that side?
Yeah, and they're meeting along aviation and Lowery.
Okay.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve with staff comments.
Have a motion to approve with staff comments remaining. Do I have a second? Second from Tim. Other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mark, I'm gonna ask you to take this next item, if you'll mark me again as not participating here.
Okay, this is on lot 6B Lee Bowman subdivision, 1579, 1583, 1587, 1591, 1595, and 1599 Genie Lane. Owner developer John Lee LLC and Scott Finley.
This is part of that final plat that you all looked at earlier tonight, so this is the completion of that lot 6B that does front Genie Lane. This is, once again, lot 6B of the Lee Bowman commercial subdivision, proposed to have a single-story 10,800 square foot retail building. In its current state, property is vacant. In July, planning commission did approve a car wash on the same property, which should be located south of this. Genie Lane is proposed to extend from Wolverine Trail to the east and connect to Potomac Place, where this development would be located, and that would allow for an access point onto Genie. One access point is proposed onto Genie Lane, as well as a shared access off Potomac Place with the car wash. A final plat will need to be recorded prior to issuance of any building permits. Vehicular use area, 31,803 square feet, which would require 3,180 square feet of landscaping. Appkin is proposing for 4,200, so they're meeting the requirement. Parking required of 44 spaces, and they're showing for 62, and that would also require three handicap spaces, and they're showing three as well. Landscape plan does show street trees lining the future Genie Lane and Potomac Place. Trees are also shown within landscape islands with shrubs surrounding the base of the building. Architecture elevations show a band of, at the base of the building to use airscraft, which is a, similar to a stone-type material, and a majority of the brick, the building would be brick. So just to give a breakdown on this, as far as the masonry is concerned, we're looking at about 89% of the building to be masonry, with the storefront, which is a glass and glazing, at 10%, and then there are rear doors at the back of the building, which are about 1% of the overall breakdown. Standard comments, we have an additional staff comment that would have to be on here. We do want to be noted that not more than one restaurant may be located in this building, and no more than 1,800 square feet. So using 1,800 square feet is breaking this building down equally into six different suites, so the number of parking spaces will not support more than that one restaurant space for this building. Staff comment one was, we asked them to clarify what the airscraft material is, and they have done so. Comment two, we asked them to show that the forced main and grinder pump are private and not responsibility of the town, that has been shown. Comment three, asked them to provide the rim elevations for the sewer manholes. Four, sewer backwater valve will be required upstream of the pump. Comment five, to submit a full set of utility plans. Comment six, to show the utilities on the other side of Genie Lane. Comment seven, the stone at the construction entrance must be eight inches thick, and then currently it's still being shown as six inches, so we'll just ask them to up that to six, eight. Comment eight, we asked them to submit stormwater calculations. And comment nine regarding, that previously had two Ingress and Egress points onto Genie Lane, we asked them to remove one of them, and they have done so. And comment 10, at least one of the handicap spaces must be van-accessible, and they have done that. So comments one, two, nine, and 10 have all been addressed, and the rest will remain. We do have, sorry, we do have one more comment. We asked them to revise all the plans to reflect the removal of the access point closest to the intersection on Genie Lane. Part of that, we did ask them to remove, there were previously two access points onto Genie. One was closer to the intersection at Genie and Potomac, we felt like that was too close to the intersection, so we asked them to remove that. They have done that on the site plan, but not on the other pages up within the document, so we just ask that change be reflected on all those other pages within the site plan's middle. With that, staff recommend approval with those comments.
Any questions from, any of the planning members? Just a quick question, and I can't really tell, is there, is there a parapet wall hiding those units from the front elevation?
It's what it looks like on the, uh...
I can't tell just from the angle, and I, yeah, I see that, yeah. I think it's there, but I just, I just want to be sure. I see it on all three sides, I just couldn't tell if it was on the front.
Yeah, it's on the front, too. The front elevation's at the bottom one, so screening it.
I'm sorry, you're right, I'm looking at the back, but is the back, do we have a need for it on the back at all?
Maybe for decorative purposes, what their goal was. I don't know if essentially a need on the back, but more so decorative.
I see the wall, that's, it's just three sides is all I saw, and I just want to be Any other questions? Need a motion?
Move for approval with staff comments.
I have a motion from Tony, need a second.
Second.
I think Andrew beat you to the draw, right there, Tim, so. All right, we have a motion, a second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? He carries. Back to you, Chair.
Next item is Rock Springs Townhomes, 3050 to 3082 Rock Springs Road. Owner developer, Miriam Makar.
This is a proposed site plan for Rock Springs Road Townhomes, which is on approximately 1.7 acres. It's located on the western side of Imperial Boulevard and north of Rock Springs Road. Property is bound to the north by multifamily apartments, east by Imperial, and to the south by Rock Springs Road, and the west by the entrance to Colony Square Apartments. Surrounding zoning consists of R4, R5, and R6. As proposed, site may be accessed from a private drive to the adjoining apartment complex Imperial Boulevard, with the 16 units are being requested. This is also a plan that has been seen before the commission, previously in 2018, late 2018, so it's been almost three years now since this previously came through. Land, the score footage of vehicular use area, 20,419 square feet, which would require 2,042 square feet of landscaping, and they're showing for 2,532 square feet. Total park required of 32 spaces, which is two per unit, and they're showing for 35. Handicap parking is not required as part of this townhome development. Landscape plan does show a variety of trees and shrubs planted around the rear of the building and on the edge of the drive aisle. Trees are also planted in landscape islands, as well as shrubs in front of and behind each unit. Trees are also being shown planted along Rock Springs Road. Architecture elevations show the lower level of the front elevations be, built with brick, and the upper levels with a mix of hardy plank and hardy shingles. Right, left, and rear elevations will all be used, will all be used hardy plank, and then as far as the floodplain is concerned, this property is located within the 100-year floodplain. There was significant discussion about this last time it came through in 2018 regarding that, and the utilizing portion of the property across the street to compensate for the cut and fill with this, and all of these buildings have been elevated outside of that area. All the standard comments will remain as part of this. Staff comment one, we asked them to provide additional guest parking spaces. There were four park, guest parking spaces that were added to these plans. The applicant has noted that due to the elevation with the cut and fill, to get the site out of the floodplain, the drive aisles are too steep to add any extra parking spaces, so they would like to see this approval with those four extra guest parking spaces. And staff comment two, we asked them to show the floodplain elevations, they have done that, so that comment can be removed. And with that, staff recommend approval with the comments.
So we, we looked at it in 2018, it was reviewed and eventually approved.
Correct.
So we're essentially looking at the same.
Yes.
Product or development here, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Are you in agreement that because of what they've done with the site, that there is no additional opportunity for guest parking?
They have the four extras, obviously we'd like extra, but if it's physically not possible for them to make it accessible for, they got extra spaces out there. It's something that we'd like to see, but if they can't do it, it's, you know, it's part of the site with that cut and fill.
I believe it is a little bit more than what was looked at, what we required before. We started requiring extra parking since this time was, since was approved.
Since 2018.
Right, yeah, so, so this is actually more than what was required with the original approval.
So we have obtained more?
We have obtained more, yeah.
Questions for staff?
So they're going underground with their water control over to the parcel across the And this is in front of Colony Square Apartments?
Yes.
I know they've had the, it looks like they've had their lines run on that property for quite a while.
And it's, it, basically, the, the original approval has expired, and then they can't be a building permits, we, your approval's expired, we can't, so that's when they resubmitted, so.
Has it always been for the 16 minutes?
Yes.
And staff is comfortable with this approval? Do I have a motion?
There's no changes from last time, really, it's, it's been approved, so I'll make a motion to approve with staff comments.
I have a motion to approve with staff comments. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve with staff comments. Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving this motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Our next plat is Ryan Farms subdivision, lot 4 and 5, 11301 Old Nashville Highway. Owner developer Waldron Enterprises LLC, investor Waldron Family Limited Partnership, ETC Gymnastics.
This is, these two properties are part of the Ryan Farms subdivision. ETC Gymnastics is proposing for a 12,520 square foot facility at Old Nashville Highway and Sunshine Circle. Currently, both of these properties are vacant. The southern and the larger of the two parcels will be used for the facility, as well as parking, while the northern tract, which is smaller and would be used entirely for parking for this site. Both parcels are proposed to have single access points off of Sunshine Circle and Old Nashville Highway. Vehicular use area for the site, 40,253 square feet, which would require 4,025 square feet of landscaping. Applicants proposing for 11,400, so exceeding the requirement. Total park required is 160 spaces, and that's calculated based on the building occupancy, and which is calculated by the building official. Proposing, currently they have 120 spaces, so 40 spaces deficient per ordinance requirement. Handicap parking spaces, as proposed, five are required. If they jumped up to 160 that are required per the ordinance, six would be required, but at this time, they are meeting the requirement with five handicap spaces. Landscape plan shows a type C landscape buffer along the southern property lines, which does border the Smyrna Housing Authority. Shrubs are shown bordering Old Nashville Highway and Sunshine Circle along the parking lot. Trees are also proposed to be planted within landscape islands in the parking lot. Architecture elevations submitted show a primary material of brick with two different colors and ephes on the second level. East and west elevations will be visible from Old Nashville Highway and must be comprised of at least 75% of the primary material. Since the reports have gone out, they have revised those to update the 75% primary materials on all those elevations, so on the east and west elevations, which we're concerned about, they have increased, decreased the ephes down to 24.91%, so they are meeting that 75% minimum requirement of the primary materials on those two elevations, so staff doesn't have any concern regarding that anymore at this time. Standard comments, all will remain, and then staff comment one, we asked them to show the percentage of materials to be used, that has been addressed. Comment two, there is a gas line along Old Nashville Highway that does cut across the street, and they are, a tree that's within 10 foot of that gas line, so we'd like them to shift that tree over a bit to get it away from the gas line. Comment three, to add a fire hydrant on the site, they have done so. Comment four regards the FDC for the building, that has been addressed. Comment five, we asked them to extend water line from the back of the building to the front, they have done so. And comment six, we asked them to show a fire line, they have done that as well. Comment seven's gonna be more so a standard comment, but just for informational purposes, the fire sprinkler system will be required for this building. Comment eight, we asked them to provide a cross section, cross section of the pavement, and they have shown that, just waiting Public Works to take a look at that, make sure it doesn't meet requirements. Comment nine, we asked them to submit stormwater calculations. And number 10, to submit a full set of utility plans. Comment 11 has been addressed regarding the access easement on Sunshine Circle. Comment 12, we asked them to show stop sign and stop bars at the entrance and exits out of the site, they have done that. Comment 13, we asked utilities comment to specify how the contractor will attach to the sewer main. Comment 14, to show where the backwater, backflow preventer and the water line are located, and then, those are both utility comments, so we're gonna leave that to utilities department to address. Comment 15 is regarding the parking spaces. Based on the calculated maximum occupancy of the building, there were revised plans submitted to us this week, and with those revised plans, the building official has calculated the max occupancy at 304. The required number of parking spaces would then be down to, it's 100, 160, I believe, so based on the ordinance, they require half of the max occupancy plus one space for every two employees, which brings that total parking space requirement up to 160 total for the site. And there's a little bit of discretion as far as that's going back and forth, as far as if that site can even attain the number of parking spaces that are required for it, but based on what the ordinance does require, that's what we are standing on tonight as far as that 160 space is being required. And with that, staff recommend approval with those comments.
So required parking is 160.
Correct.
We've got 110 that's, that's shown.
120 or other.
120 that's shown.
They did about as a plan, but it added 10 more.
120.
Do we have room here to add another 40?
I don't think they do, no. No, and have, there detention and other things are required to have.
I mean, based on the use of the building, though, I mean, I get it, it's 12,000 square feet, it's, it's gonna be a gym, so is that calculation, how is that done, based, I mean, like YMCA or something like that, right?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, Mr. Steve Smith is the building official, he looked at the numbers the architect submitted, and he agreed with the numbers that he submitted, but the most recent numbers, he didn't include, there is a mezzanine level in the building, that has a pretty large meeting room space, that has a capacity of like 70 people.
Okay.
And stuff like that, and so when you add that mezzanine level occupancy, that's what kicks it up to 304. Based on the main floor of the building, they would be fine, but that mezzanine level with some offices and party room and different things, kicks that occupancy level up to 304 people. And so, so that's 152 spaces, plus eight for the employees, gets you to the 160.
Okay, that makes sense.
We've had a lot of discussion back and forth between the builder, the developer, the engineer, everybody about this, so they may have comments that they would like to make, I'll, but I'll defer to them on that.
Mr. Chairman, again, Steve Steele, twenty-one fifteen Northwest Broad. We have been talking about this quite a bit. The owner has a facility in Murfreesboro, similar, I think in size, maybe larger, they don't have near that much parking. The owner operates a facility out at Ammerville Plaza, in a, in a building there with, I think, five other tenants, and even there with the other tenants, there's not a hundred and sixty spaces in that parking area. So, the, so the owner, the developer, is convinced that that's just way too much parking. But with that said, this is the requirement in your zoning ordinance as interpreted by the codes official. So, I don't know that you really have any recourse to relax at. I'm not an attorney, but you have the town attorney here who can speak toward that. What I would ask you to do, if you would consider it, would be to approve the plan with site comments, subject to going to the Board of Zoning Appeals, and asking them to relax that requirement. I believe that would be the correct course of action, but I would encourage you to ask your town attorney.
I've got, it looks like it'd be a beautiful building, something exciting in the area. At the same time, with gymnastics in this building, and the mezzanine level that was brought to, brought to, as a point of interest as well, could the building also be used for gymnastic events? And if so, then how would that affect the parking?
You said gymnastic events?
Right. The use of the building itself. Like, right now, what you provided is where they're located now, and the parking that's required with their location. Now, this new building will offer new opportunities, and that's what I'm trying to address with that.
You know, Andrew, I really couldn't address that. I'm not, obviously, I'm not into gymnastics myself, and I really don't know.
Me either.
I'm not, I don't know that business well enough, but I just, again, I don't, Kevin, Mike can, or Jeff can tell us, I don't know, with the interpretation we've gotten, we've been working on the interpretation, I'm not going to say we agree with it, but it's what it is right now. I think our recourse would be to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
So, certainly, it sounds like if we were to approve this, and approve it with staff comments, which currently includes a hundred and, parking for a hundred and sixty, it would be then up to BZA review and approval for a reduction, correct?
Correct. They would have to grant a variance for that, basically.
Yeah. You mentioned the other operation, is it anywhere near the size, square footage of this operation? You know, as far as you said they were
Tim, I think, I think it's the same, you talked about in Smyrna.
Yeah, you said that, I think you mentioned they were
Ammerville Plaza.
Ammerville Plaza.
Yeah, they provided me with some information. I didn't provide it to all of you, because I don't, again, I don't know that you could act on that.
Yeah.
I believe the facility is about half the size. My recollection is they're using about sixty-five, maybe eighty-five hundred square feet, and they have a group of children, it's mainly children
Mm-hmm.
that do gymnastics. And I don't know that they're planning to change their operation, really, they just want a bigger, better building.
Sure.
And one thing about this building, I'd heard some talk about, there was concern, well, it might be approved of this, as this use, and then get used for something else. This building for gymnastics has pits, you know, large pits that are depressed, so that they put, I guess, foam or whatever, so if it wasn't going to be a gymnastics facility, and say somebody wanted to turn it into a, let's say, a church or something, you would have to go in and retrofit the floor to level it out, and at that point, I think they would have to come back to the Planning Commission and ask for that, for that plan to be approved.
Yeah, it's currently zoned to PRD, so.
This is C two.
Oh, this is C two?
Yeah.
Why, why am I looking at PRD under zoning up here at the top of the site plan description?
That's probably, that's a mistake on our part.
Okay, so this is a C two zone?
It is C two zoning, yeah, yeah.
I mean, that could have been fixed really quickly if it was truly PRD, because we've probably defined how it's going to be used at that point, but I, I hear your point.
It's a requirement of the zoning ordinance.
Yeah.
You know, any of us that have kids or grandkids that visited some of these places before, I can tell you, they're my little grandkids, and that's where they want their birthday parties and things like that to be, so I'm very familiar what you're talking about, and there's times I want to get out there with them, but that wouldn't look good, so.
Hypothetically.
Yeah, hypothetically, so. But the use is really a use that Smyrna could get a lot of value from, for our children and so forth, and so I, I like what the product is, I like, you know, the mezzanine for birthday parties and things like that for kids. If it's the same concept that I've been to, Smyrna having something like that is, I think, a gem, especially for our children. So, I'd like to find a way to resolve it through the BZA, potentially, or whatever, but, you know, we are handcuffed to the ordinance at this point, so I'd like to maybe suggest that, if we go forward and decide to do something with it here tonight, that it goes back to the BZA for a look. I agree, from the standpoint of a hundred and sixty parking places, it seems excessive to me for what this use is. The places I've been and visited before had nowhere near a hundred and sixty spots, and it was a busy Saturday, and so everybody was parked comfortably, but they time those birthday parties and things to where you have a reservation at two, you have a reservation at three, and so forth, so there's families coming and going all the time, and it's not like everybody comes at once and parks there and does that, but the facility itself and what it offers for Smyrna and the children here, who love gymnastics, I think it's a, it's a good fit, so.
And there, I mean, another option, which would take a couple of months to do, but there certainly, we could look at, is this a correct requirement of our ordinance? So, do we need to look at that as a revision to our ordinance, which could then go to council and change the ordinance?
Every use is different, I get that, and, you know, Steve even alluded to the fact that what if, in ten years, this building sold and became a restaurant or something different? You know, the usage really has a lot of variance and vary on the amount of parking you need.
Right.
But we can't really pick and choose, we've got the ordinance to go by for a purpose, but we may need to look at that sometimes.
Well, they have a remedy front of them, essentially, for deserving of bills, but at the same time, it probably would be worth simultaneously looking at, visit the ordinance on addressing parking for different uses like this.
Right, I agree. Other discussion or questions?
Just, I guess, noting that if they have a competition at this facility, then that would absolutely pack out this parking lot from the vendor several days.
That would be a problem. Otherwise, normal business, I don't think this is a problem at all, so I agree that we should go forward with BZA and then have some more discussion about it.
Okay. If, if that's the inclination, I think what we would need to do then would be to have a motion here, and then based upon, you know, if
Meeting the ordinance.
Meeting the ordinance and dependent upon staff comments, then I think that certainly could get to the next step, potentially a BZA that were a positive recommendation.
Then I'll make a motion for approval with staff comments.
I have a motion to approve with staff comments. Do I have a second?
A second.
I have a motion and a second to approve with staff comments. Further discussion?
Do we need to specifically call out a BZA approval?
The property. I think, I think you would best just go approve it the way, with our comments, and if the BZA grants the waiver, then that comment can go away.
Then they would meet.
Good, all right. Motion and second, further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Our next item is Smyrna Airport Business Park, lot four, northeast corner of Aviation Parkway and three, industrial owner developer Hillwood.
This is the Smyrna Airport Business Park, lot four, which is bound by three industrial, Aviation Parkway and Liberator Lane. Lot three within this business park does lie to the north of this property. Property is currently zoned A1, and the proposed use is for a three hundred and seventy-six thousand nine hundred and fifty square foot warehouse facility. This development would mirror the other warehouses that are constructed as part of this Airport Business Park subdivision. Square footage of vehicular use area, seven point five acres, which would require twenty-six thousand one hundred and thirty-six square feet landscaping. Applicants proposing for ten point five acres. Total parking, a hundred and seventy-eight space required, and they're proposing for two hundred and sixty-four, which would require seven handicap parking spaces, and they're showing for eight. Landscape plan shows a line of street trees to remain along Liberator Lane and Aviation Parkway, with trees added along three industrial. Additional shrubs are shown to be planted around parking areas and trees and landscape islands. Architecture elevations show the building to be built using concrete tilt panels with varying colors, and this is consistent with the other buildings within the Airport Business Park. Couple standard comments, all to remain, and then our one staff comment we had about an auto turn has been addressed, and that can be removed, so all we are left is with the standard comments, with that staff recommend approval.
The Chair will recognize John Black.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
John, talk, talk to us about what's going on with the airport and what this means to the community.
Sure. So, I'm John Black, the Airport Director at Smyrna Airport, and just to let you know, this, this does carry the a hundred and ten percent approval of the Airport Authority, it has been through the Airport Board, and we do have representatives of Hillwood here tonight. They've been a great business partner for us to build out the industrial portion of the Airport Business Park. We also have, to continue on into the Airport Business Park on the air side, we are currently extending Thunderbird Drive, and that will connect to Liberator Lane, which you see at the top of the drawing there, which will make a nice loop through the Airport Business Park. Also, on the air side of Thunderbird Drive, Stevens Aerospace is, is building a forty thousand square foot hangar there with about fifteen thousand square feet of office space, with an additional forty thousand square foot hangar to be added to that. They do aircraft maintenance mainly on the King Air aircraft and citations, so they've brought a lot of jobs and bringing a lot more aircraft into, into the Smyrna Airport. The other side of the airport, we have a thirty-three thousand square foot maintenance hangar under construction right now, another ten thousand square foot hangar under construction, and Hollingshead Aviation has about sixty thousand square feet of hangar space that they're going to be constructing on their FPL lease.
I'd like to thank you, what you and certainly the board do, we appreciate the investment by Hillwood and all the other business partners out there. I couldn't think of a better place that I would want to relocate in aviation, or business, or anything else that fits nicely into the Smyrna footprint there.
Appreciate that. We'll continue to get a lot of looks, so we'll be back.
Good, like hearing that. Okay, I digressed a bit, so any questions for staff on this? Do I have a motion?
Move to approve with staff comments.
Have a motion to approve with staff comments. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Our next item is the vintage section one along Genie Lane and Old Nashville Highway, owner developer investor Waldron Family Limited Partnership, TDK Construction.
This is part of, another part of that plat that you see, you saw earlier, this is the first section of that vintage multifamily residential development. It is proposing for three hundred and twenty-four units, which would be occupied by three buildings. All three buildings will face the road frontages of Old Nashville Highway, White Birch Avenue, and Needham Drive. Parking will centrally located behind the buildings, as well as street parallel parking spaces. There will be an office building in the community amenities, which would include a dog park, pool, growing space, and a fire pit as part of this section. Vehicle use area for the site, four point six four acres, and they're proposing for twenty thousand two hundred and twenty-three square foot landscaping, that is required, rather, proposing for thirty-seven thousand seven hundred and twenty-three square feet, so they are meeting, exceeding the requirement. Park required of six hundred and fifty spaces, and they are proposing for six hundred and eighty-three, which would require also fourteen handicap parking spaces, and they're showing those fourteen as well. Landscape plan does show street trees lining White Birch Avenue off of Old Nashville Highway, along Old Nashville Highway and Needham Drive as well. Trees and shrubs are also shown in landscape islands throughout the parking lot, as well as at the base of each building. Architecture elevations submitted show a mix of a cream and light brown fiber cement boards and a dark and light brick to provide visual contrast, which is also consistent with the approved PRD. A couple standard comments, all to remain, and staff comments. Staff comment one, we asked the Fire Department comment about the drive aisles of twenty-six foot, and that has been addressed. Comment two, asked to provide an FDC for each building, at least thirty foot off each building. A fire hydrant is also required within a hundred feet of the FDC. Comment three, to show a dedicated left turn off Old Nashville Highway into White Birch, which was part of the PRD, which, rather, traffic study. Comment four, regarding the fourteen handicap parking spaces, has been addressed. Comment five, asked them to submit sewer, sewer profiles. Comment six, all four story buildings are required to have a sprinkler system, so more so of a informational comment. Comment seven, the fire truck access must be within thirty feet of all four story buildings on at least one side. There was a concern with one of the buildings that is on the corner of Needham and White Birch. Fire Department is working with the engineer and applicant on that as well to come to some kind of resolution, so progress is being made on that. Comment eight, to submit a full set of utility plans. Ten to, sorry, nine, show the utility connections for each building. Ten, show where the water meter will be, and then eleven, a reduced pressure backflow preventer will be needed for this. Comment twelve has been addressed, we asked them to show the construction entrance to be two to four inch rock diameter and eight inch thick, that has been addressed. Comment thirteen, submit an auto turn, the auto turn submitted shows the truck encroaching on several parking spaces, so we asked them to revise that to show the truck not doing so. Comment fourteen, the west end of building one B will be required to have a sewer backwater valve complying with section seven fourteen of the International Plumbing Code installed at the sewer main as it, as it's the building, that is a codes comment. So, sum that up, comments one, four, and twelve have all been addressed and can be removed, with that, staff recommend approval of those remaining comments.
Questions for Mitchell and staff?
Move to approve with staff comments.
I have a motion to approve with staff comments, so I have a second.
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve with staff comments. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The last item under site plans, trying to make, probably the most anticipated, is Whataburger, three sixty West Sam Ridley Parkway, owner developer Whataburger.
Yeah, Whataburger is proposing for a restaurant located at three sixty Sam Ridley Parkway West, which is nearby the intersection of Needham Drive and Sam Ridley Parkway West. The project location is part of lot three within that Stone Trace Commercial subdivision. The site would have road access to Needham Drive and a private drive, which also does connect the rest of those properties that front Sam Ridley all the way over to Race Track on the corner of Old Nashville and Sam Ridley. Currently, there is an approved file plat to subdivide lot three into the three lots, but has not been recorded at the time of this report, so that will need to be recorded prior to issuance of any building permits. As proposed, the site has adequate stacking for approximately twenty-two vehicles. Vehicle use area at the site, twenty-nine thousand one hundred and fifty-eight square feet. Vehicle use area at the site, 29,158 square feet, which would require 2,916 square feet of landscaping. They're proposing for 5,401 square feet. Total parking required of 38 spaces and they're showing for 38 and that would also require two handicap spaces for which they are showing. Landscape plan shows trees and shrubs lining the private drive and Needham Drive. Additional trees and shrubs are also shown within landscape islands surrounding the building and within grass areas. Architecture elevations show the building to be built primarily utilizing brick with the secondary material of EPHIS around the top of the building. The elevation's facing Sam Ridley, about 80% primary materials and facing Needham Drive is about 76%. The building does mirror each other on each side, so that is respective. So, the Sam Ridley side you have 80% and then what would be the future Genie Lane, you have 80% as well and Needham you have 76% and the opposite side of that would also have 76% primary materials, so that does meet our 75% threshold for primary materials. Couple standard comments all to remain as well as staff comments. Staff comment one, we asked them to show those material percentages. They have done so and are meeting the requirement. Comment two, they originally were proposing a metal parapet at the top of the building. They have removed that, so that comment has been addressed. Comment three, we asked them to show a sidewalk along Needham Drive. They have done so. Comment four, we asked them to show pavement markings that have not been done yet, so we just want them to show the pavement markings on the entrance and exits of the property. Comment five, we asked them to show within a site data table all of the parking numbers and the landscaping figures and they have done so. Comment six, we asked them to provide the room elevations of the upstream sewer manhole and that is another department's comment, so that will remain on here. So with that, staff comments 1, 2, 3 and 5 have all been addressed and all that remains is 4 and 6 and with that, staff to recommend approval with those comments.
Mitchell, I may have been flipping through here. Are we good and we're okay that we can stack enough vehicles?
Yeah, they're showing for two stacking lanes and even then if it does back up, it's still going into their parking area, so.
So, it'll keep it off of Needham?
Yes.
Okay. Other questions for Mitch?
What is the, is there a plan for a signal light at Needham, through Needham? Because I know Toots is on the other side apartments and everything else is.
There will be a signal at the new roadway that's being constructed to the east into the what's called Ravens Point. This was too close to the Old Nashville Highway intersection. And they are, there will be some work done at the intersection to limit the traffic crossing Sam Ridley there. So, they'll have the left turns, but they won't be able to make, you'll be able to turn left in each direction going into Needham Drive, which you won't be able to go across and so that'll eliminate some of that cross traffic. That was all per TDOT's review and TDOT's approval of the whole, this project, this large Stone Trace project as well as the Ravens Point project. So, there won't be a signal there, but there will be some work at the intersection to limit some of that traffic conflicts.
Okay.
Other questions?
Move to approve staff comments.
I have a motion to approve with staff comments, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve with staff comments, further discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Agenda item number six tonight, ordinance amendments, A Design Review Manual, number one, architectural requirements.
Yeah, these are some, this is the Design Review Manual as well as the Lower Street Overlay District and the Eden Springs Gateway Overlay District. There were some changes in state law this past year that prohibit communities, does not prohibit design review requirements, things like that, but it does prohibit us from completely prohibiting any particular materials. And so, we do have within Design Review, Lower Street and Gate, Eden Springs overlays, we do prohibit certain materials. And so, what we have done is to remove those prohibitions, but then we did provide for some limitations on those and basically that we have our currently allowed primary materials and currently allowed secondary materials and we added another category of accent materials, which could be anything else that's not listed and it limited it to no more than 10% of the entire building. And so, that is in, it kind of has mirrored the same type of requirement in the Design Review Manual as well as the Lower Street and Eden Springs Overlay, Gateway Overlay District. So, there's a lot of text in there, but that's basically, in summary, that's the same across all three
What?
Issues, or all three ordinances.
What were some of the materials that were prohibited that are now no longer prohibited?
Standard block, metal, vinyl siding, those kind of things.
Did we hear from our state representative? I think there was one of the sponsors on this to ask our opinion before this bill.
He did not contact me.
Okay. Just curious.
I did, I did contact him, but.
You did?
Well, via email, because that's the only way to get a hold of him, but.
Did you get a response?
I did not.
Okay. I guess it's a little disconcerting in that, you know, we worked very hard to raise the standard of what we want to do here and there are reasons why we don't want certain materials and it would be nice to have a little local input on local issues. I'm done.
We'd be great on limiting that.
Yes, I did. I promised Mark I'd be professional.
Sometimes I have to rip them in.
Questions for Kevin or Jeff on this? Do I have a motion?
Do we have a choice?
No.
Move for approval.
I have a motion to approve, do I have a second?
I just can't lend myself to the second, I'm sorry.
Tim gave us a second, thank you, Tim. Well, and again, it's really difficult when you're up here and you're trying to raise a standard that benefits all in a community and I have no clue. Maybe you got a lobbyist for one of these material groups that says, "We want to build more, fill in the blank." So, let's make sure that local communities can't prohibit it.
Well, the worst part, as you said, right, is the state government taking away control from the local government without even bothering to talk to them about how it affects. This doesn't affect the state at all.
No.
It affects the municipalities and they don't bother to talk to them and that representative that you mentioned served on this board, so he knows what we face.
Yeah.
When I will say, the original form, it did get better through the legislative process. The original pretty much would have completely prohibited design review at all and so, it has changed through the process. We couldn't prohibit the materials, but we could at least still have design review requirements, so it did get better.
We could have maybe originally had a 8,000 square foot vinyl building on Sam Ridley, right?
Absolutely.
Yeah. That would have been nice.
Removing design review defeats the purpose of trying to beautify our communities and so it's a little frustrating when there's no dialogue with the local communities to govern such a thing. I'm glad they didn't remove design review. It's a, it's a big necessity of.
They would have thrown a fit if the federal government had said that to the state.
That's right.
I am not pontificating anymore, but if anybody else has anything further to say, please. I have a motion and a second. There's no further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye, okay. Opposed, motion carries. Our next item under, let's see, ordinance, zoning ordinance, structure location on a parcel.
Yeah, this is a, staff recommended a change and it's kind of one that I feel a little bit ridiculous having to even recommend, but I do. Because it's kind of common sense, but we still have to put it in our ordinance. This is regarding the location of a structure entirely on a parcel. This would add that all portions of a building or structure must be fully located within the boundaries of the parcel of land on which it's constructed. This would include portions of a building or structure that would not normally be subject to setbacks such as HVAC units, you know, bay windows, retaining walls, things like that. Again, it seems like common sense, however, common sense is not enforceable in a court of law. So, we are asking to put this in our ordinance. So there, we have had a situation where this actually was happened and we couldn't deny CO because of HVAC unit was built across property line. So, this would allow us to do that. So, this would add Section 3.210 to the ordinance and.
Same person owns the joint property.
Then they can move the lot line, but for whatever reason, they didn't want to do that. So, this was a builder, builder situation. Yeah, I think we maybe, there was one, anyway, it was kind of a mess. So, anyway, this would allow us to enforce this part of our ordinance and deny CO, so if it happens again. So, we would recommend approval of this as we submitted to you.
Questions?
Move to approve the staff comments.
There are no questions. I have a motion to approve with staff comments, do I have a second?
Second.
Not, I'm sorry, I have a motion to approve, there are no staff comments. It was all my comment. A motion and a second, further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay. We are on to the August bond review.
Yeah, we got several.
Buckingham Place, Section 1, Phase 2. This is the end of the maintenance period and we would be happy to release this if they get the final nine items cleaned up. Otherwise, we would recommend extending it six months. Woodcrest, Section 3 is the same situation, about eight items. Again, end of the maintenance period, we'd recommend release. If they did done, otherwise extend six months. Buckingham Hills, we would recommend a six month extension on that one because they have not put the topping down yet on that section. Rookers Bend, Section 1, Phase 1. Velford did not, but then he didn't get back to me before the packets, so I don't have any input from him, but we would recommend an extension on that one. They're getting, this may be, we're getting close to the end of, we would recommend extensions because this one's been, we've had this in about seven years now and these two hasn't put the topping down. So, we would recommend, we would recommend extensions this time for this next, this go around. Cedar Hill, Section 2, Phase 2. About eight comments left. They did request an extension. They do plan to pay late fall, early spring, so we would recommend six months extension to allow them to get that completed. Smyrna Industrial Park, they are, they had indicated they would try to get this done last week. I have not heard, had a chance to get an update from the inspectors if they got finished. They did, our inspectors have said, "Please do not reduce this bond" because there is some issues out there. So, we would recommend a six month extension on that one. The 1868 Ambleville Road, we have initiated, we want to keep this bond, but we have initiated action and they have indicated that they would get those plants redone because that's a landscaping bond. Woodmont, Section 6C, they developer did, hear from them. They do plan to complete the final topping and all bond items in early fall, so we would recommend a six month extension on that one to allow them to get that done. Preserve Stewart Creek, Section 3, everything's finished. They did ask, there's like four little cleanup items there. We do recommend reducing that to 10,000, extend for one year as the maintenance bond. And then the last one is Amberton, Section 2. They did indicate they would be finishing that up early to mid-August and so if they are able to do that, this bond doesn't come up till September 12th. So, if they are able to do that, we would recommend reducing that to 10,000, extend it one year as the maintenance bond, but otherwise to extend it six months, that's the same amount. That's all we got.
Questions for Kevin for our bond review? Do I have a motion?
Move to approve the bond review.
I have a motion to approve the bond review, do I have a second? I think Amy just barely beat you, Andrew. I have a motion and a second to approve the bond review, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Staff comments and other business.
We do have a few items under other business tonight, so I apologize for lengthening an already long meeting, but we do have a few items. One site plan and then Mr. Peach has a couple of mandatory referrals he would like to present to you. Just have one? Alright. So, the first one is James Academy, which is on your desk there. We do have a report there and Mitch can go ahead and present that one.
This is a site plan for James Academy, proposed to be located at 13189 Old Nashville Highway. The proposed building is to be 10,064 square feet in size with an additional outdoor play area behind the building. Access to the site will utilize the existing common entrance off Old Nashville Highway, which is used for the other developments as part of this commercial subdivision. Square footage of vehicular use area proposed for 20,746 square feet, which would require 2,074 square feet of landscaping. Applicants proposing for 10,967 square feet. Park required of 39 spaces and proposing for 40. Handicap parking space requirement of two and they're showing for two as well. The landscape plan shows shrubs lining Old Nashville Highway and along parking areas. Additional shrubs are also shown around the building. Architecture elevations show a mix of brick and stone and fiber cement siding. The south and east and west elevations are all visible from Old Nashville Highway and do meet the elevation requirements of 75% of the facade that is visible from the public street to be finished with the primary materials. 77% of the entire building is clad with those primary materials, which do comprise of brick, stone, glass and glazing, so they also meet that 50% requirement as well. Couple standard comments to all to remain as well as a few staff comments. We had staff comment one, they were showing trees along Old Nashville Highway along with the shrubs. We asked them to remove those trees because there's a close proximity to a water line that does run along that same side of Old Nashville Highway. We didn't want any tree roots competing with that water line, so we asked them to remove those trees and they have done so. There is a vision triangle we also want to be, we want that part of this comment to remain just to ensure that no motorist are having to creep out into Old Nashville Highway to make sure they can make a safe turn out onto the road. So, we'll take off the first sentence of that, staff comment one and remain with that, ensure a vision triangle is kept clear. Comment two, to resubmit an auto turn. The auto turn that was submitted shows the truck overhang encroaching on, over curbs and Fire Department has expressed concern, saying that they do not want any part of that fire truck, whether it is the wheels or the overhang to encroach on any curbing or parking spaces. Comment three, we asked them to submit sewer elevations and that also goes along comment four regarding the sewer lines nearby the detention pond. Those sewer lines are already existing at the site, so stack line 3 and 4 can be removed. Comment five, this is part of the reason why we have it under other tonight. The current zoning of this property is a PCD at this time. When the property was rezoned, decors were not included as the allowed uses by right for this property. This use will be required to be heard by the Board of Zoning Appeals to be allowed to operate on this parcel if approved by you guys tonight. So, there was some discussion back and forth as far as the current zoning of the property, if the decor would be in allowed use in it. So, after discussion back and forth, it was determined that it would have to be reviewed by the BZA to be approved, but applicant has expressed interest in having it heard tonight and having that conditional approval put on it that it is heard by the Board of Zoning Appeals. With that, staff to recommend approval with those comments.
1, 2 and 5 remain. Is that what we're saying?
Correct, yeah, well, yeah, 1, 2 and 5, yes.
Okay. So, what we're basically looking at it was when this PCD was originally approved, a daycare was not allowed use, correct?
It was.
It's an allowed use, but it's just by special.
By special exception, I'm sorry.
So still, you'd still need to go through the process for any special exception.
And let's go ahead and talk through the process, because we've got some new members here.
They would just go to the Board of Zoning Appeals and request.
Perfect, so if we. So, so before us, yeah, so I want to make sure everybody's clear on this. So if the commission was inclined to approve this with staff comments, part of the approval process would be to go before the Board of Zoning Appeals and obtain approval there?
Yes.
Okay.
Just a question, do they, they don't have to present a hardship in this case, do they? I mean, it's just for special use.
No, not, not a variance, so it's just, you know, you've got those lists that are special exceptions.
It makes all the sense in the world to have, to have something like that located there around all the housing that's close by.
I mean, the elevations look really nice, and I agree with Mark, this is, would be a great.
It's a good fit.
Good, great fit for here, and a great fit for the surrounding neighborhoods, I think. Questions for staff?
We've seen that Larry just kind of sit for a little while, you know, just seeing it begin to develop again, for a use that really fits, I think is, I'm glad to see it come. I'll make a motion to approve if there's no other comments with staff comments.
I have a motion to approve with staff comments. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve with staff comments. Further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
On the other hand, I said, I said two, there's actually only one, and I'll let Mr. Peach present this to you.
Yes, this is just a mandatory referral, because this will be public property. This is, as you can see, it almost looks like a bow tie little area there. It's only .7 acres. This would be, 1917 LLC would be donating this property to the town. And so before we have a deed signed, obviously, I need to bring it to this body to receive your blessing.
Would you like to elaborate more on this one for us?
I can. This will be good, good for us to have a little extra breathing room right there for the right of way, or for any utilities that we may need to put at the corner of Stone Crest.
Okay. You've heard our councilor's discussion on this?
And I am abstaining from this.
I've got an abstention already, so. Mark, Amy is not participating or voting on this one?
So our motion is just to accept the easement, or what's the, what's the motion you're looking for?
To approve the mandatory referral.
Yes.
And it'll go to the council for actual formal action, but it has to come to planning for recommendation.
Is that your motion?
Yes, sir. I make a motion to approve the mandatory referral.
Do I have a second?
Tim wants to.
Second from Tim, thank you. I have a motion and a second to approve this mandatory referral. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Anything else from anyone here?
One item I'd just like to ask again. If we can ever get these businesses to put up a coming soon this sign, would help tremendously. Sometimes these things are a year later, and by then we go, oh, we forgot what corner that was, so. I know we can't make them do it, but if you as a staff could say, please, please put up a sign.
Well, if it's been a year, is it coming soon, or coming sometime?
We probably need to talk through that.
We can get Jeff to elaborate. Anything else? We stand adjourned.